Good evening, welcome to the City Commission meeting Tuesday, June 17th. Would you call the roll please?
Mayor McCoa?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Present.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor, we have members present, the quorum of three is met.
Thank you very much. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is public comment. These are comments that do not have anything particularly to do with the rest of the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any subject? See none? Commissioner comments?
Saturday morning at 9:30, I'll be having my coffee with Commissioner Adamcheck will be joining me. Will be in the auditorium at the library. The Grossbeck Room was reserved, so we will be in the auditorium and we will make it very comfy. We'll bring coffee and donuts and would love to see everyone there for some discussion.
I'm happy to report that I was in Aggieville yesterday and construction preparation is starting on the Back Nine project, so glad to see that that is moving ahead. I also want to commend Public Works for an item that is on our consent agenda. There's a new task order program for street repair that will allow the department to increase its flexibility and reduce time in doing repairs, and so thank you for looking at ways to streamline that effort.
Great. I'd just like to thank all the people who came out for Flag Day. It was really well attended and well thought out. And then, of course, Juneteenth, we marched. And I'd really like to say thank Taco Hut and Rotary for the free burritos and winis that they provided. I know we served over 100 burritos because the Taco Hut people knew how many there were. So it was a really good turnout, it was a great day, and it's wonderful to see the public out like that. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or items that have been previously reviewed by the City Commission. Is there any comment from the public on any items on the consent agenda? Please come forward.
The bridge is on it, right? The Potawatomi?
The Potawatomi Bridge. Yes.
So it's just Andrew von Lintl, 225 Four Winds Court. So I just saw that there was discussion about a memorandum with Potawatomi County and Riley County about another bridge across the river. I just feel like it should be a low priority for the city of Manhattan unless we greatly expand city limits into Potawatomi County. So if we add a lot of territory to the city limits, then I think it could make sense to add a fourth bridge. If we don't add any city limits, then I don't see why. I could see it being good for positive for Potawatomi County, but I wouldn't see it as being a positive for a lot of, you know, we wouldn't want to be a high budget, or we wouldn't be wanting to spend a lot of money on a bridge that is just for commuters from Potawatomi to come our way, and that would be my thing. And then, my other concern is that if we did this study, it'd probably cost a lot of money and then probably wouldn't happen. So, I mean, just realistically, how much, what is the chances of this bridge happening? And I would also just say that it really is like, it says it's the second bridge, but it's really the fourth bridge because it's, there's the dam, there's the bridge at Rocky Ford, and then there's Highway 24. So there are existing, they haven't really tried to connect very well to the Rocky Ford Bridge, in my view, so, thank you.
Thank you, would you sign in, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on the, okay? Commissioners, any thoughts, questions?
Can we just clarify when Moro will open at the intersection?
12th and Moro will open tomorrow.
Great.
They were able to get the last patch of asphalt down today.
That's awesome, because that's ahead of schedule a little bit.
By a day.
By a day. We will take it in construction, that's great.
I wanted to say similar to what Susan said, I really like this task order idea. It's creative, something a little bit different. I know that's one of the complaints that I hear a lot, is that, well, this is pothole in front of my house that hasn't been fixed, so what is the city even doing? But if we can help kind of increase that response and service to folks, I hope it works. And, yeah, so good luck this summer.
Would anyone like to move approval of the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moving second, Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCoa?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I'm opening a public hearing on considering to issue industrial revenue bonds for the 716 Morrow Street Housing Project.
Good evening, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. We had this project before you back on May 13th, so the presentation is very similar to what you saw then, so I'll kind of run through it pretty quickly, but if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. So Morrow Flats at 716 Morrow Street, the commission gave guidance at the work session to move forward with a $80,000 workforce housing sales tax grant, a IRB sales tax exemption, as well as an IRB property tax abatement. The property tax abatement would be based on performance, so both the amount invested in the project, as well as the number of units that are leased. The property owner or the developer will continue to make a fee, or will continue to pay property tax based on the schedule that you see on the screen. This is also included in the agreement, there's about a 5% increase each year. This is just a summary showing the overall ad valorem at the end of the 20-year, so after the property tax abatement expires, and then how much would be collected based on that project improvement, and then the 20-year period. And, so a summary, this project will create five units. There's a total of $800,000, $800,000 being invested by the developer. Again, the workforce housing sales tax request there, that's a reimbursement-based grant, and a sales tax, so the resolution that you have before you has the sales tax exemption, as well as the property tax abatement. That's what I had, that's very, that's the same thing we presented a month ago, so, but if there's any question, questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for Stephanie?
I just wanted to say that I appreciated the cost-benefit analysis that was included in our packet in order to understand all of the details of this. That was very helpful, and I hope that we continue to do that as we move forward. I think we're learning, as we've been talking about housing issues over the past year and a half, I think we're learning what information is helpful for us, so thank you.
Sure, that cost-benefit analysis is actually something that Bond Council requires for any property tax abatement, so anytime you see those abatements, you'll have that cost-benefit analysis, and it's typically the same individual that does those, so they should be pretty similar in format.
No other questions for Stephanie? Is there anyone in the, excuse me, audience who'd like to make a comment on this issue? See none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 061725B, determining the advisability of issuing industrial revenue bonds, IRBs, and authorize execution of an economic development agreement with Midtown Holdings LLC for the 716 Morrow Street Housing Project.
Second.
Moving second, Brenda, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCoa?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next issue on our general agenda is to consider an ordinance establishing a boundary and regulations for the downtown consumption area.
Thank you, Mayor. City Commissioners, my name's Jared Wossinger, Assistant City Manager. The ordinance tonight is amending, the big part is creating that common consumption area downtown, but also doing some adjustments to the special event portion of that chapter, as well as what used to be called assembly permits, will future be called demonstrations. So I want to give you a little background, talk about the specific ordinance changes, and then dive into the actual boundary of the downtown CCA and how we're going to use signage and demarcations in that area, and then give you a little overview of what the city and businesses will have to do as a next step in order for this to go into effect. We've had a few work sessions on this, we had one back in the fall, and then another in the spring, back in March. Following that, we got direction from the City Commission to have some stakeholder meetings, particularly with our two groups that have been looking at CCAs over the last few years, Aggieville and Downtown. If you recall, Aggieville did come back and really wants to not focus on that right now with all the construction going on, but come back to something like that in a few years once that process wraps up. So we focused a lot of our stakeholder meetings with Downtown, and that included members of RCPD, as well as the ABC with the State of Kansas, who oversees CCAs and those permits and enforcement in those areas. And then following those meetings, we did a few walkabouts with those parties, so members of Downtown and RCPD and ABC came into town, and we walked the district so we could really fine-tune what we wanted that boundary to look like, where signage should go, so that we have a plan in place in the event the commission approves this ordinance tonight. So the ordinance defines the common consumption area specifically related to the downtown boundary. As it was before, it's going to be an ongoing one, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week, and that 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM does coincide currently to day two with the outdoor dining platforms that are there. It will continue to allow the free flow of traffic, so vehicles will still drive down unless there is a special event that's closing down the street. The city will be the permit holder for the CCA, so we would be the ones applying to the State of Kansas to have a CCA permit, so if this ordinance is approved, we will need to fill out a form and pay 100 bucks to the State of Kansas, and renew that annually for the CCA to be in place. And then, there's the ability for any licensed premises, that would be, you know, the drinking establishments that are adjacent or within the CCA to participate. Before they can approach the city to participate in our downtown CCA, the first thing that they're going to have to do is get approval from the ABC, so there's a specific form, it's pretty straightforward, a lot of them have done them before with the CCAs that Downtown has done on Third Thursdays, on those one-off events. So they'll get that form, and then they will, we are going to be creating a form that we will administer with the city. There'll be two separate permits, you could say, one is just going to be a participant permit, so that would be a $250 annual fee in a form that they will need to fill out, that they would renew annually, and that is just to participate in the CCA. So, if you have a participant, and we're just going to use an example of Tallgrass, if they get a participant permit, that means they can sell alcohol within their establishment, and an individual can then leave with their marked cup and go out into the district and walk the district within the rules of the CCA. In addition, you can, if you'd like, get a non-contiguous service area permit, and that would allow that similar establishment to locate a position outside of their business, most likely on the sidewalk in front of their business, where they would actually be able to sell outside, an individual could come up, you'd have a little cooler there, or something like that, and they could exchange and sell, and then you could walk the area. You could do that on an ongoing basis with that permit, or you could do it on a special event case-by-case basis. A good example you see on the previous Third Thursdays where it was a CCA, is you saw some of those businesses coming out with a bigger canopy in the street because it was closed. So that could also be where that non-contiguous service area is. The state does have rules related to the cup that you're going to be serving and using and walking around with. In a CCA, it needs to be a single-serve container, can't be glass, and the biggest thing is it just has to display the licensee's name or logo or another identifying mark. We are going to have, you know, before this goes into effect, some informational Q&amp;A sessions with these businesses downtown, so that they understand what they need to complete, but also some of these specifics. But really, you know, there's kind of two options that a business could take. You could purchase a bunch of plastic cups with your logo on it, and that's the designated CCA drink. You could also have a distinct cup, and you could affix, you know, your logo with a sticker on that or something like that. But either way, when someone's walking throughout the district with their drink that they were, that they purchased, you know, ABC or RCPD need to have that identifying mark so that they know where that was served from. We are making some changes to Chapter 31 as it relates to special events too, because this does have an impact to it. We're not making any changes related to a special event that would be outside of the CCA, so nothing changes there, but we do need to understand that you could have a special event that is partially within this CCA boundary or entirely within the CCA boundary. If it's partially within the CCA boundary, we're going to need to manage a lot of those specifics, and it could change, you know, whether it's a race or a different type of event. You would not be able to carry your alcoholic beverage from within the CCA outside of that boundary if that special event extends. And that's why we're just going to need to really work closely with the applicant, talk through any reasoning and rationale about that special event, why it's outside of it, and make sure we, just ensure that that doesn't occur. It can be suspended, the ordinance is allowing the city manager to temporarily suspend the CCA and the consumption of that alcohol for a specific event, so that is something we would work with the applicant as well. If it's entirely within the CCA, and it's a special event without alcohol, and the individual does not wish that that would be occurring, again, the city manager can suspend the CCA during a special event, and we do need to provide notice to those licensees so that they're aware of it, and they can make sure to educate their workers and guests on why it's not in effect and when. If it's an event within the CCA completely, and you want alcohol, and a good example might be a Third Thursday that's coming up, the CCA will be in effect just as it is every other day, but it's a special event, the streets are closed down, there aren't cars parked, and it really functions the same as it would. The special event can, if it is a special event with alcohol, it still can allow for a licensed caterer, so in the event you have an applicant who wants to do a special event with alcohol within that CCA boundary, they do still have the ability to bring in an outside caterer to also serve beverages. And that would follow the same rules we had before, where they would need to, you know, just follow the same rules as the state to ensure that they're serving in the correct way. One other ordinance change, while we were in this chapter, we wanted to make some clarifications. We used to have, or we currently do have what's called an assembly permit, five or more people gathering in a place, a lot of the times, it's some type of demonstration where a group of people is getting together. There's just been a lot of confusions over the year of what constitutes an assembly permit, and the use, you know, if five people are just getting together somewhere, do you need an assembly permit? What are the, what's the rationale there? So we adjusted the definition and changed it to a demonstration permit, and you can see the definition there of, again, gathering on city property, not less than five people for, you know, political reason, whether it be in support or protest of something, a gathering, it could be displaying of signs, speeches, just a large gathering. And then we do want to make some updates based on that ordinance change to the application, so that when the individual requesting that demonstration permit is getting the right information that's routed to city staff and RCPD when they're reviewing those. Here is the boundary of the CCA, it's very similar to what you saw a few months ago. Really, the only change is, I believe, when we were here last, this kind of extended right here and connected back to the parking lot, and we wanted to kind of avoid just the parking lot in general from the CCA boundary. You also may recall that kind of included some of these businesses up here, but we just wanted to include the right-of-way here. It still includes all of those licensees to be able to be within the CCA because they're adjacent to it so that they can participate.
Jared?
Yep.
I was curious about that, in part because Manhattan Brewing Company frequently has, in the last couple of years, has used the alley behind their building to host events.
Yep, and they'll still be able to, because it's outside of the boundary, they'll still be able to get a special event with alcohol series and do what they're doing now, which is where they, I think right now they close that whole alley down to traffic from like 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays.
Would they have to, would they become a contiguous provider, or, I mean, what, why not include the alley as part of the, right now?
Well, that alley does have, provide for traffic, deliveries, and vehicles going through it. So, we are making, this CCA today still allows all that traffic to occur, and they have a specific event type that they want to actually close down the alley for, so they actually block off that alley so that no vehicles can get back there.
Okay.
So that's one of the main rationales that it's not included, but our ordinance still allows them to do what they're doing today, which is get that special event with alcohol, have a series, pick those Fridays and Saturdays that they want to do those events. Any other questions about the boundary?
So, in previous sessions, we've had conversations about the farmer's market. Does this do anything, does this change anything about that?
This in particular doesn't change anything about that, however, there is still an avenue, and we've had conversations with the farmer's market about their ability to serve alcohol in this area, and they still have that ability with their agreement with us in the mall to utilize this space on those Saturdays to get a special event with alcohol.
Okay.
Back to that conversation we had a few months ago, you know, we didn't want to include an area that was really only probably having alcohol being served four hours a week.
Yeah.
Right, so, but they still do have that ability, and there's always the ability in the future to expand the boundary.
Okay, thanks.
During our walkabout on a beautiful Thursday morning last week, we identified where we're going to put all of our signs. The orange sign right now is really an indicator of that "No Alcohol Beyond This Point" signage that we're going to put strategically in certain areas, so really, as you're exiting the district, that's where you would come upon a sign, plus, just some simple, you know, we've identified probably some white paint that would be at that sidewalk area that would say "No Alcohol On This Point," or "Beyond This Point," so you have that true line of demarcation. So as you're going north here, like on Fourth Street or Third Street, you would be seeing those signs as you leave the district. And then around these areas is where we identified it. We also are creating some just informational signage, so as you're entering the district, as you're going into the district, these will be positioned for pedestrians to see the rules, the regulations, the actual boundary, and I have just a mock-up of those signs that we're going to print. So this is your standard, you know, traffic sign, the one on the first slide I was talking about that's going to be, as you exit the district, you're going to see these "No Alcohol Beyond This Point" signs, and then we'll have some nice two-feet-by-three-feet, you know, more colorful informational signs, just about the times, the cups, we'll have a link to our website, so we will have a website dedicated just to the rules so that the public can go to. Any questions on the signage or the layout there? These are things we'll produce and pay for to ensure those are ready for when the district starts.
You need a period after "Thank you for visiting Downtown MHK."
Or an exclamation mark.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so in the event the City Commission does approve this tonight, the next steps, first, the city, and we have this ABC A36 form ready to go, that we'll pay the $100 to, you know, we'll attach the ordinance that will go into effect, and then get that permit from the state, and then we'll notify our licensees, we'll reach out to them early too, just to start filling out this ABC 383 form so that it's ready, once we have the permit, so that then they can submit theirs to the state. We'll need to print and install those signs and paint those boundaries, publish our website, the FAQ that was attached, to make sure these permit applications are available on the website as well for our businesses, and we're hoping to do all that so that this can take effect in mid-July and in time for the Third Thursday event. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a question, a couple. So, the, all right, so we have businesses that can choose to participate, and that, those are businesses that are, I would assume they have to have a liquor license in order to participate. What about the businesses that don't sell alcohol?
Yep, so, we do have this statement right here in our sign, so businesses may allow or refuse CCA beverages inside their business, so it's really up to the business if they want to allow patrons to bring in an outside drink or not.
Okay.
And we're going to, you know, work with our marketing team too, things that we've seen in some other cities is providing stickers that say "Beverages Welcome," or "Please Pour Out Your Drink," or "Finish Your Drink Before, You Know, Entering the Establishment," something like that.
So, on that, if the boundary is at their storefront, and they're open to beverages, you can carry it into?
Yep.
Store?
If you walk out of this licensee establishment, walk down the street, and you want to shop at this building right here, you could, if they, if that business wants to allow that.
I, do you think maybe the boundary can be a little confusing? I guess if people just understand, I guess as long as the boundary is their front door?
Within or adjacent to the boundary.
Within or adjacent, okay, that makes sense.
So I have another question that might be a little bit more complicated. So there's four businesses, I think, three for sure, that sell food that don't have liquor licenses. What, how does that, how does this affect them?
It'd be just the same as walking into a retail store.
So if a coffee shop wanted to allow people to walk across the street, get a beer, and bring their beer into the coffee shop, they would be allowed to?
So, a common consumption area only addresses possession and consumption of alcohol in the premises. All the rules related to sale of alcohol on those unlicensed premises are as set by the state and otherwise. So the business is subject to, as an unlicensed premise, if they wanted to serve or sell, they would have to go through the state process and have a caterer, and if they can have BYOB on their premise because they're an unlicensed premise, the state doesn't care where that comes from, as long as it's been lawfully sold.
Okay, so, so really, the liability falls on the sale, not the consumption, unless if they're in a licensed establishment, right?
Every business in the CCA is liable for any alcohol violation that occurs on its premise, on its premise, but not within the CCA boundaries. So a private business is, can violate the alcohol statutes or have an alcohol violation on their private business, whether it's possession, sale, or consumption.
Yeah, okay. So, if a miner tried to go into one of these non-licensed establishments, even if they were to choose to participate, it would be on that business to enforce the laws, whether, okay?
It doesn't change the responsibility
Right.
of the business
Right.
in that scenario.
Yeah, so you end up having the same issues you have in places that are selling it as if someone buys it and then pushes it over to a miner.
Mm-hmm.
It's on the business.
And so, I just wonder if that's a concern for some of those businesses, that they will now then have to be enforcing liquor laws that they are probably not at all prepared or trained that they are probably not at all prepared or trained to enforce.
Yeah, that's why if they don't, don't want to, they need to put that sign up that says, don't come in.
Yeah, but if somebody really wants to come in, they still have to enforce that, um.
Yeah, whether you sell alcohol or not, carding individuals who are bringing alcohol into your business is probably a pretty safe practice, one you might be, uh, implementing. The awareness of our businesses is something that we'll need to work with, DMI and others a- around this issue. Just because somebody walks in with a well-marked cup and, and it's plastic, doesn't mean they possess or have been consuming that legally.
Mm-hmm.
And as Katie described, as soon as they walk in the door, it's gonna be on that business to either not allow it, or take the ne- necessary steps they need to take to keep themselves in, in line with the law.
So the Stricker Knotts in West Gallery will say to people as they come in the door with their beer, we're gonna card you?
They can, they absolutely can.
Well.
It's up to them, if they wanna allow them in to drink, that they're allowing them in to consume that alcohol, and if they're not twenty-one, they can also be in.
They probably don't have the expertise to look at both driver's licenses and things like that, maybe they do in Aggieville.
Um, so my second question, I very much can see the benefit of this during a third Thursday or a major event. Do we have kind of a, a co- a happy medium between having to apply for and manage the, uh, special alcohol, special event with alcohol, and this common consumption area? Cause I understand the, 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 the benefit of this CCA is that we, now we don't have to do those special events every time we wanna do third Thursday with alcohol or some other event downtown. But is there something in between that like, kind of helps alleviate some of those challenges for the non-participating businesses, but still allows us to relieve some of that administrative burden? And I understand this is a very last minute que- time to be asking this question.
Commissioner O- Opel, I, I almost feel it would be appropriate to have Gina, um, from, um, DMI come up and maybe speak to that, and I know she's been in contact with the businesses, and, and she's really the one who administers that and applies for those special event permits. So I, I would ask her to come to the podium and speak to that, if she would.
Hi, can you ask your question again, please?
So, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about the times where it would be very natural for people to be walking down points with a beverage, right? And, you know, the, the most, the, 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 the most common, uh, is that, is those events like third Thursday? I know we have those all the time, and we're trying to plan some more of those types of events. Um, you know, where we shut down the street and all that stuff. And I am, a- and so for each, each time you would want to have, and a, a third Thursday, and pe- allow people to walk around and visit the vendors with a drink in their hand, you'd have to apply for a special event with alcohol?
If we close down the street.
Okay, so that, that was, that, that's kind of my question, is like, is there, is there a, a compromise between that, you know, having to close down the street, make the, all of these administrative burdens, and the common consumption area? Or is this just the most straightforward way of alleviating that burden?
I don't know that that's actually a question for me, I mean, I think that, um, I mean, I have my own questions about what our obligations are during a special event with alcohol when we close down the streets, as opposed to how it is when it's just a CCA. Um, I can say that, for the most part, in talking with all the businesses, I mean, we've been at this for five years, so lots of surveys, lots of talks, lots of discussions about it. Um, I would say that most of the non-licensed establishment businesses have and do par- do their own alcohol events inside their private walls, or they participate in things like Promenade on Points, or the Art Walks, where we do have alcohol inside their businesses. They're used to this, it's, um, it's, it's kind of a, a, a common thing. And I think, oh, a CCA is not, is very, very different than third Thursday, I mean, it's.
Right, and that's, that, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, like, are we making this to, a, a bigger, a, a, a bigger solution than we need?
Sure, Gina, thank you for, I kinda wanted you to speak to the desire of the businesses that are down there, the desire of DMI, and, and why we have been working on this for five years and, and towards the solution. So, thank you for that, I certainly didn't mean to put you.
That's okay.
On the spot, um.
Did I answer that okay?
Yeah, I, I, I think you did a great job, I, I do think this is something that we have been working on, and, um, Commissioner Opel, this is certainly something that we can always change. If we are experiencing, um, challenges and, um, the businesses are, are realizing that it isn't really providing the benefit that they thought they would, or if DMI is starting to experience issues with this that they were not anticipating, um, this is certainly something that, that can be undone, it's nothing permanent. Um, the signage that we are putting up can be taken down just as quickly as it can go up. Um, but it does feel like this is something our community has been working on for about five years, and there's certainly interest in it, um, so, you know, if, if there's an opportunity to, to experiment with this, I think we certainly can.
Daniel, um, where is this interest come from? I mean, who have we heard that really, is it DMI that wants this, or is it the, the bar owners, or? I mean, I haven't, I haven't heard this demand for five years.
So, you probably remember that every year we do stakeholder surveys.
Mm-hmm.
And we often ask questions about what would you like to see happening in the downtown? Oftentimes, those are things like CCAs.
Okay.
Those CCAs are very common, you've probably been inside them many times and not really, probably even really realized it. We are actually, in the state of Kansas, we're behind the curve, more and more communities are, um, putting CCAs in place, and they, for the most part, are working beautifully. We are prepared to, um, sort of deploy, for lack of a better word, uh, information immediately should this pass on how we're gonna move forward, as far as the stickers that we're making. If you don't want to allow alcohol in your business, everyone will have the same uniform sticker. We're gonna go around and talk to all of our businesses about all of these rules, and how it works for your business, and how it doesn't necessarily work for somebody else's business, and give everybody clear understanding about what can happen. Uh, one of the things that I really like is that the dining platforms have kind of been a test for this, in a way. Um, we've really sort of educated the public on how you can be outside and be, cross that public right of way, or not cross that public right of way. We've established these, these dining platforms to be available for alcohol from eight AM to eleven PM. This is something that is in our trained set of n- knowledge now as far as patrons, but it is a topic that comes up all the time, we are constantly talking about this kind of thing, and.
Well, which kind of shop, which kind of business really is concerned about this? Is it, is it the people who serve alcohol, is it the?
Concerned about.
Is having this ability? Is it so pizza places that don't have alcohol and would like to have people go buy their alcohol and then come have a pizza? I mean, who, who's, who's asking this?
The general feeling, um, by more businesses than not, is that it provides an atmosphere. It allows for you to, for example, get your Bloody Mary at The Chef, and if you want to run over and get flowers at Steve's or Gatherings at three thirteen, you can. You just walk down the sidewalk and do that. The other, because these businesses have these non-alcohol rela- uh, licensed businesses have been participating for years in some kind of alcohol on-premise type of event, like Promenade on Points, like the Art Walks, um, they're, they're very used to that, they want that, they like that. Most of them are fine with it being in their business, some are not.
Gina, can I, can I just pose a counterpoint to that?
Yes.
Those events are limited, and they are planned well in advance, and, um, those business owners are able to either prepare their staff or staff the business themselves for those events. Whereas, some of these businesses have fifteen-year-old kids working at them on a Saturday, and we're going to ask those kids to enforce alcohol laws for which their business owner, their, their employers could be very severely liable. And what is the benefit to outweigh that risk?
Yeah, I, I hear you.
Could I just point out too, Promenade on Points, you go from business to business, but you drink your, your, your little taste of wine in the business, you don't.
Well, that's, that's because we don't have a CCA.
Yeah, I know, but, but I think, you know, I, I've got a couple more concerns, one is trash. As I leave the do not take your alcohol any further, you know, sign, and with my plastic cup, instead of the glass I would use inside a bar, what am I gonna do? I'm gonna toss it, and it, you know, I mean.
I, I think that's something that the district could look at in having trash receptacles. I think these are all real good concerns.
Additional cost to the city or the district.
But it's, but it's not like this hasn't been, been done and been done successfully. We have a convention center that's there right close by, I think it's a draw for people, eh? We have this area down there, you may have an, uh, hour wait for your dinner, but you can walk around and visit other places while you're there, or sit on one of the benches, and, and they'd spend a lot of money making it nice down there to walk around and, and, uh, do stuff. So, I mean, I think it is a benefit to the district, it, as I said, it gets us having something that other people have. Uh, the Wareham, was, we all have that coming up, and we wanna bring people from out of town. I think it makes it, again, a bigger draw to have this there. And I think we've got a pretty responsible district that's proven it over the years, so I think we have a group that can do it, and it's a concept that others have done. Uh, it's just do it right.
We, just to answer, just to acknowledge what you're saying, Peter, I do hundred percent hear you on that. Um, I do think that that's an important point to acknowledge. I don't know necessarily what the solution, hundred percent, for that interaction every time I, with a fifteen-year-old, I don't know. Um, the, the no alcohol inside sticker is what every other district in Kansas that's creating a CCA is doing. And to address the trash, we do have a, a, a trash, we have a groundskeeper who's been on our staff for eight years now, and he knows that there's going to be additional trash to be picked up in more time, and, uh, is added to his, more time and more places are added to his route, so. We're trying to think of all these things.
And why did eight AM, what, where did, why, why did we pick eight?
The dining platforms are in op- are allowed to be in operation from eight AM to eleven PM, and so to avoid any kind of confusion, if you're on a dining platform, you can walk onto the sidewalk and not, for them not to have separate times.
I think we have one business that serves alcohol before eleven?
For now.
Yeah, okay.
Think, you know, those can always change.
I, I do have some questions, and Gina had hinted at it, but, um, the difference between, I guess, Jared, there you are, couldn't see you. The difference between the special event, so with the CCA, if there's a special event, we'll just use third Thursday. I, my understanding is right now, that can be fairly burdensome from monitoring the, the areas where people are allowed to go, where they're not allowed to go, if we're blocking off streets for that. I understand if there's a special event, we still have to block off the streets, but from the monitoring of the area of the special event, that would just be consistent with the CCA boundaries?
Yeah, a good example, uh, a year ago, when we were doing the CCAs downtown, uh, DMI was the one who was the permit holder, they had to, you know, get volunteers to work at stations at entrances and make sure people had wristbands, and they were in charge of ensuring that people were sold alcohol and were of age, whereas now the CCA, one, the city's the permit holder, not DMI, and then that responsibility falls back on the licensee to ensure that, uh, the individuals of age that they're serving.
Okay. So, so what I'm hearing is it lessens some of that burden on the, kind of, DMI as a whole, and that monitoring of the boundaries, cause we just follow with the CCA, and it stays with the business owner who's selling it? Gina's standing up, I think, she.
I think, just to clarify, I think what you're trying to ask is what we talked about the other day. Um, and Jason, you and I kinda talked about this. When we have a third Thursday event that we want to also close down the street with barricades, in the past, we have been told, and we do, hire security. And volunteers, we man the, we man the, um, volunteers are not free, by the way. Volunteers man the barricades, we hire security to do the whole, um, last call, you're underage, do you have your wristband on, um, whatever the rules are for that special event with alcohol. And it's my understanding that it will be the same way if we choose to close down the street, and it, that we would have to require, we would have to supply security, volunteers, probably anything but the wristbands. I would assume those would go away, right? Okay.
We're gonna have to look at every special event that wants to happen inside this area, because there're gonna be special events that don't want alcohol, and we're gonna have to work with the license holders, the city, city manager as the permit holder, as to whether or not we're gonna notice those businesses between eight noon, there's gonna be a race, and they don't want alcohol. So we can sus- temporarily suspend, as Jared said, I think it's five days advanced notice, we have suspended the CCA. They may want it. We have to work within that boundary as to where that alcohol is going to be. If they wanna get outside that area with alcohol, it's going to require more discussion and enforcement type of conversations. If they are wholly within that CCA, the CCA will govern, if that's what everybody agrees to. But this is being written in a way that things can happen in and around, but they are going to be conversations about what people desire and what the city is willing to do.
I'd, I'd like to ask that, should we pass this ordinance tonight, that Gina, you, you come back to us in six months with a status report? Um, I'd like to know if there are adverse events, I'd like to know if, if there is, um, evidence of underage drinking. I'd like to know, um, if the, once it's implemented, the non-restaurant, non-bar businesses regret their decision? I can imagine that, um, Mesa might not appreciate me coming in with a Bloody Mary into their establishment. Um, on the other hand, I can also consider that if I were enjoying a Bloody Mary over at The Chef, I probably wanna just sit and finish it there. So, you know, how much is this actually going to be in place? And I don't know how you would quantify that, but, um, I, I would like to see some update once implementation takes place.
And, and I'd like to know if, if, um, are all the bars and everybody gonna start serving everybody with plastic so that they can wander about with it? I mean, when I go to, to, you know, Bourbon Baker someplace, I don't want, I don't want plastic glasses, I want glass glasses. But what's, how are, how is, how are they supposed to know what I plan to do next? Um, you know, I, I just really think this is sort of a, a problem in search of an answer. We have the ability to have special events and close up and have DMI be responsible, which I think is, is important, that's why we have a DMI. And, um, I just find the cities, I, I'm afraid we're more liable and responsible for what goes on there, when it should be those businesses, um, they're involved.
Can we hear public comment?
Well, as soon as you guys stop, I will.
I don't have any more questions.
I just had one more question for Jared. Um, did, was ATF part of your discussions at all with other stakeholders? I know you mentioned RCPD and ABC.
No.
Okay. Pub, is there any public comment on this issue?
Andrew Vaughn Lentil, two twenty-five, Foreman's Court. Um, I go to Finn's somewhat regularly. They allow food in, like, you know, they're, so I mean, it's the reverse, but there are places where you can take pizza. I mean, for them, they can, you can go to AJ's, get a pizza and take it into Finn's. Their business model, they don't wanna worry about food. They just want to worry more about drinks, so that's, you know, an idea. Um, so I, overall, I think the city is ready to do it. Um, and it's just to be a test thing. I mean, like she said, you put the signs up. You can take them down if things get wild, but I think it'll be fine. Thank you.
Sign, would you, yeah, I know you did already.
I did on the other one.
Okay, anybody else?
Amber Starling, four zero eight Houston Street. I found this presentation to be a bit lacking um, in some information that is usually presented to the commission when we make legislative decisions. Um, those are a clear understanding of the demand for this change, a very clear understanding of the risks associated with it and how those will be mitigated, and then the costs break down. As far as demand goes, Ms. Snyder mentioned the general feelings of a survey, but surveys don't have feelings. Uh, what are the numbers? How many businesses polled wanted this? Out of how many businesses were polled? Actual data. Um, as far as the risks associated and how they'll be mitigated, uh, for example, my business is within the CCA. Where my business is located, there are unmanned interior hallways insofar as it is the landlord's responsibility. Now, if people are in there drunk, is he going to have to now hire a security guard to manage the space? Because he will be responsible for their behavior. And then how easy would it be perhaps to steal one of those cups, leave, come back another day, bring your own alcohol in that cup, and ostensibly be walking around with alcohol that was given to them by a bartender who of course made sure that they were of age and made sure that uh, they were not being over-served, because those are a bartender's job. Um, the costs associated that I'm concerned with, um, the additional costs for the groundskeeper, since there will be additional hours and duties for him, uh, a breakdown of the administrative costs for training local businesses and how to uh, actually administer this in their own businesses, uh, the cost to implement and administer the CCA to the city, signage costs, uh, they said where all the signs are going, but not how much they cost. Uh, and then the liability costs to the city. Uh, as somebody who worked in emergency services, I will tell you, uh, it's a very simple equation. Drunk pedestrians plus cars equals trouble. Um, and I would imagine that a CCA would increase our insurance costs per year because of the additional liability. I would urge you at least to table this, because those are very huge holes in the decision that you were trying to make tonight, uh, if not to strike it down. Thank you.
I think as a, as a uh, consumer, I can see that it would be nice if I were waiting for a table at a crowded restaurant. If I'm out on a, a date night and I'm waiting for a table, it would be nice to be able to have a drink and walk down the street and not have to be in that very crowded restaurant uh, uncomfortably. That happens for me personally, very rarely. I, I, I think we do have more questions than we have answers tonight. And I'm, I'm not philosophically against it, but I need to have more information on it. A lot of it has to do with the non-participating businesses. Um, how do they, I mean, what burden are we placing on them? What is their plan? How, how are they going to um, enforce their non-participation? Um, how can the city support them enforcing their non-participation? Will we have additional enforcement in the district, at least during business, uh, busy times? You know, we have a lot more, we have a lot of cops that are in Aggieville, um, understandably, but we have all these rules and rules are only as good as the enforcement of them. So i- is that going to be additional costs on, on the, the, uh, the police department? And we know how, how stretched they are for resources already. And just what, you know, we have these risks and then what is the benefit? Aside from some people being able to, to get a couple of drinks while they're waiting for a table. I don't know if those outweigh each other.
I, I do think a benefit is sales tax generation, revenue generation. If we're having more people there feeling comfortable moving around, I think of um, Taco Lucha and so long. Although they're not in a CCA, they have those nice areas off to the side. And I would, I, I don't have this answer, but their, their business, I think, continues to, to do well because they have areas, they have ways to um, support that request, that community need, but it is.
Is it enough to out, to outweigh the liability? And we haven't heard, we haven't had, uh, we've talked about this a couple of times. We haven't had any actual businesses that want to participate come and talk to us about how it will benefit them. I would appreciate hearing from them as well.
We could table this if you'd like to have.
I'm, I'm comfortable with, I mean, we already talked about this once. The reason we're here is because we already reviewed this. And um, as far as the businesses, I think they go through their business district. And I don't think Gina would be here if that business district didn't want to do it. And as we've mentioned, they, yes, they do a lot of the special uh, events, but to me, um, in this day and age, this is what an entertainment district has. And as we mentioned, the Wareham, we've got the Discovery Center, we've got the Light and Art, we have the Convention Center, we have the theaters, we have all that down there. And I think this now puts us equivalent to where other places are in the state or are going to in the, the state. And I'm confident that the, that the businesses want it. As far as if a business doesn't want it, they just put up, they don't have to participate um, in it. And yes, we'll have to go through the education uh, part, but I think this group's ready for it.
And how do we, how do we help those businesses that don't wanna participate enforce their non-participation?
Well, I guess you're assuming that a lot of people are gonna try to go into their business and ignore the sticker and.
It could happen.
Yes, it could happen, but, but there's no shirt, no shoes. They can do that too.
I mean, and several businesses have like, you know, I, some allow others to bring in food to their businesses. Others don't want another establishment bringing food, or another food establishment. I mean, so we, we see that in other arenas and alcohol, not right now, because we don't have this option. I, I, I think.
Some businesses allow you to bring a Coke in, some don't.
Right.
The, uh, so you have that same thing. I wanna bring my Coke in.
I don't know that that's a, a fair comparison though, because there aren't additional legal liabilities for bringing in food or non-alcoholic beverages.
Well, if someone comes in that you told not to come in, that has an alcoholic beverage that's under age, they're, they're, it's dress passing onto your property.
So we're, but, but then we're also.
I think you're creating scenarios to create scenarios. The.
That's exactly what we're doing with, with this whole CCA though.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't like it, just don't like it.
I would rather retable it and, and get some more information. That's where I'm at.
I'm with John. I do like Susan's suggestion of having a follow-up period. I think we would need to be um, pretty clear on what information we would want. I, I'm looking at that from um, a survey of businesses, um, a survey, I, uh, maybe of consumers, but um, incidents that we've had, I think that that's appropriate. Um, I, I do see this as um, a, a longer-term strategy of revenue generation. We're talking about an entertainment district and I, and I think that that fits into it. So uh, it might be too early in that time to see if that's had a, a positive return on um, sales tax revenue. But I, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with where we're at. I'm with John on, on echoing what John's saying, but like Susan's thought on, on follow-up.
Gina, I wonder if it might be possible to develop a monthly monitoring form or something like that to try to quantify some of this. You know, have a standardized form that each business can have posted somewhere that says on Tuesday, four people came in carrying beverages from someplace else. On Wednesday, uh, one underage person came in on.
We can certainly do that. I don't think that most of them will do that, just knowing how laser-focused they are just on running their businesses.
Sure.
Um, but most of the district knows that they can call me, email me, come see me. They do all day long. And I walk around and talk to business owners often about things that are going on and, and how, how it's affecting them or not affecting them, depending on what it is. Definitely can get you feedback. Definitely. Not a problem at all.
I, I do think we would just need to formalize what that feedback.
I can also give you past survey information if you would like that.
I think, I think this entertainment district is a little different than Aggieville in major ways. But it's, it's up, more upscale. When I go in and I want a margarita, I do not want a margarita in a plastic cup.
Usually they'll give you your glasses when you ask for a to-go cup. You even do that with soft drinks today.
They'll give me, but then I have to pour it in a to-go cup.
They'll, they'll do it. They'll do it. They'll, they'll do it. They'll do it for you.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know why we have to drink everywhere. You know, this is a more sophisticated adult carrying drinks here and there. It just, to me, does not entice me to eat there.
I don't think that the CCA takes away from the sophistication of downtown. I think it, it.
I think it might.
I, I see the, the target individuals using this, or honestly, I mean, it's a different age group of, we're not, I, I don't think that the main draw to downtown is going to be a wild, rambunctious group. I'm, I'm picturing kind of a, um, young, old professionals. I don't know how, I'm trying to figure out how to capture uh, people in my age group. Um, yeah.
That's, that's partly why I asked for some information. I mean, and certainly your, your business owners are not going to be asking people's age, but you know, can we get just an idea of frequency? You know, how often does someone walk into Steve's carrying a drink? How often does, um, you know, to me, I'm kind of with Karen. I mean, I, and I don't wanna personalize this or, or be conjecturing things. I just don't see this being a super frequent occurrence, you know?
I, I think they'll do yours, they probably won't tick marks every time it happens, but I think if she does the survey, they can give you an idea of what it, how, how often it.
Yeah.
It'll be somewhat subjective, but.
Or did you mean like people walking around into businesses being a frequent occurrence? What, 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 what did you mean by that?
Yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I, I, I don't envision a lot of people taking their glass of wine or their beer or their Bloody Mary away from the location where they can order it to go into a retail store.
And if that's not a reality that we're going to see a lot of, then why are we going through all of this and putting us at this risk for something that's, may not happen a lot?
I move, we approve ordinance number seven seven six oh, amending various sections of chapters four and thirty-one of the Code of Ordinances related to consumption of alcoholic beverages, special events and demonstrations, and add a new section to chapter four regarding the downtown common consumption area.
Second. Brenda, would you call the roll please?
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
No.
Commissioner Amcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
No.
Motion carries three to two.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn. Second.
So we move in seconded, would you call the roll please? I have to ask for what?
Oh, that's right. This is a I thing.
Can I please have your eyes to adjourn?
Aye.
Very good.